I'd like to call to order the Board of City Commissioners for November 17th, Oshone, Oklahoma. Call to roll, please.
Vogel.
Here.
AG. Harrod.
Harrod.
Maynor.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Shaw.
Present.
Dykstra.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have one. Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda. Oh, I guess we better get up here and go to work. I'm trying to speed it up. Do we have someone here leading the prayer? If not, then please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father.
To the Lord in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The vine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Lord. Amen.
Commissioner Vogel, would you lead us in the flags?
Please lift the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Item number three is commissioners' comments.
I would like to mention that Commissioner Pagey's in Street Portage on the trip with the Adidas Foundation and Community Renewal. So, usually absent, so I don't mention that.
Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll move to...
I guess I'd like to say, I don't know who does the city road cleanup, but I think they did a pretty good job.
Did a good job.
They were joining on the spot the last couple of days and we wanted to just say thank you for the hard work.
Commissioner, the street department works for the city engineer, and you're absolutely right. I came in this morning at 3:00 in the morning and the streets were better than they were on the interstate. So, I completely concur. Thank you for that.
At 7:00 last night, they weren't very good. I was looking.
But it was still snowing.
Too many people in the roads.
The snow was coming down. I wasn't looking forward to today, but it finally cleared off.
Any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll move to citizens' participation. We do encourage citizens' participation. And we have time limited. Anyone here like to speak to us on any matter? Okay, if not, we'll move to number five. I'm a little bit confused about this. Mayor, you may have to help me here. This is a resolution, so I know we have it printed also down there, but I'll read the item, which is a resolution of support for Adidas Foundation and partnership in their community renewal international pilot program. Then we have a staff report. Do we have someone to say anything on that? Probably not, huh?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Michelle from Adidas Foundation is here. If you guys have any more questions, she was here to talk about and launch that at our last meeting. This is just to show support for the initiative.
Right. I know Commissioner Vice Mayor asked for this and along with her commission wanted to do it, but you know, it's kind of different than our normal resolution since we already kind of do some of those things.
We just re-prepared it in a formal form, even though you had endorsed it because they asked for that.
Okay.
And we went ahead and put it on the blue paper and did it nicely so that they could have it in case they needed it to show someone or to...
Well, I don't think we need to read it. I'll come down and maybe read it and give it to her or something.
I overtake. Adopt the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Dykstra. Let's vote.
Would do everything but spend money like that. We'll let you spend the money like that.
We're trying.
This is a resolution number 6482 from the Resolution of the City of Shawnee in support of the community renewal of Potawatomi County. Whereas community renewal of Potawatomi County is an international organization to bring partners together, restore hope, rebuild caring community, and renew the spirit of cooperation in every segment of the community. And whereas community renewal inspires residents to come together to turn neighborhoods into safe havens of friendship and support. Whereas Adidas Foundation is the local sponsor based on an international model. And whereas the mayor and city commissioners on the community renewal of Potawatomi County will provide the citizens of Shawnee with many benefits toward improvement of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the city commissioners of the city of Shawnee that the city lends its support to the efforts for establishment and success of community renewal of Potawatomi County. The city authorizes community renewal of Potawatomi County to make use of this endorsement, as it determines may be, of assistance to the organization. Passed and approved on the 17th day of November. Thank you.
Woo-hoo.
Thank you so much. If you want to say something, please.
No, we're just excited about community renewal coming to our community in Shawnee, supporting the concept. I've had status reports from the trip, which Linda AG is on, and also Justin Erickson, Russell Franz. And the trip has been, so I've been told, very meaningful, so we're excited to get a full report back. Thank you so much for endorsing. It's going to mean a lot, and I think Shawnee, five, 10 years down the road, is going to look so different from what it does today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is consider a resolution of support for the construction of a 26-single-unit housing development and supporting favorable consideration for tax credit award for Excel Development Corporation. Do we have a staff report on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I believe we do have a presenter here from the Excel Development Group that'll speak. I've spoken with planning director Justin Erickson, and staff has no objection to the resolution.
Did the planning commission hear this?
No.
So, let me ask you a question. By us passing a resolution, does that, it doesn't have to go back to the planning commission and then come back, or what is this?
Don't believe so. I think...
I really...
I'm a little bit confused.
There wasn't much about this in our packet, but in the past, we, on these items, we've kind of passed the resolution, and then they come back to get the plat and everything else.
Correct.
This is just like the first phase.
It's already zoned. It's already zoned.
Okay. I'm just asking a question.
It's zoned, and you'll see this again during the planning process.
Okay. Okay. I think you were going to address that, so that got addressed. Did anybody else have any questions on this discussion?
What is in this land right now? Is there housing already in this land, or is it vacant?
There's currently a single-family home on the property, and it was a packer ranch.
I can't hear you. Could you come up here, please, and state your name and sign in so the TV audience can hear you, okay?
Sure. I'm Jennifer McCabe. I'm with Excel Development Group. The property is currently residential. There is a single-family home on the property currently, and it was an alpaca ranch.
Why Shawnee?
Why Shaw... Well, because this is my hometown.
Other than that?
Because Shawnee is growing, and I just think that we have a great need for housing our low-income folks. Currently, rent in Shawnee is $1 to $1.25 a square foot. Someone making minimum wage cannot afford that kind of rent. And the things they can afford are substandard. So, we propose to bring in a single-family housing project for them to have decent, safe, and affordable housing.
Any other questions?
Most of these tax credits have not come to Shawnee. They've gone to Lawton and different places because of military base down there is growing, and they're still committed to that. So, I much hope this is the second project we've had come before, so the other one wasn't funded either, so...
Maybe it's not going to get funded tomorrow either.
Oh, it's not.
It went back in, this time the apartment complex south, north of the highway.
That's what I say. We just got finished with Lindell, 70, 60 units out there. The one out across from Elks just got through remodeling, remodeling it, so of course I'm concerned, somebody else might answer this, but of course I'm concerned, there's plenty of housing.
Well, we have partnered with DECO for this project, and Randy can attest to the wait list that we have for rental housing here in Shawnee.
But if you don't get accepted into the program, whatever it's called, I don't know what the right words are.
Right.
Then you won't build the units.
Correct. The resolution that I have before you tonight is simply a resolution of support for the application for these federal and state tax credits for this program. It just says that you're aware of it and that you support us applying.
And so then you're competing with like the...
Everyone else in the state.
Yeah. Okay.
At some point, I don't know, I mean, we need to look at really what the need really is for this type of housing. I don't want to take up time tonight to talk about that, but necessarily, you know, slow this down, but we're going to, we continue to see these, and at some point, we need to probably look at what the real need is.
We have a third-party market study performed, and I'd be glad to share that with you when that is...
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, would you share that with the staff here?
I sure will.
And they can share it with us. It would be very appreciative to help us on that matter.
Absolutely.
Because that'd be data that we could enjoy reading.
Yes.
Okay? Any other questions? Okay. If not, okay, thank you so much for coming forward. The chair will entertain a motion on item number six. Are there no motions?
I move to support for construction. I so moved.
We got you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hall.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, could you read it?
This is a resolution supporting the construction of a 26-unit housing development by Excel Development Group located within corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and supporting favorable consideration be given for tax credit award for this development.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, item number seven is consider a resolution to declare certain items surplus property and authorizing sale of said items at auction. Mr. Bryan, you just throwing this stuff away?
No, no. Nothing that the city can use, anyway. In your packet is a list of items that each department has made. Those items are most of the time obsolete, unreparable, you know, or just, you know, they just don't use them anymore, and we need to make room and get rid of them. We just, every year, Expo Center team up with an auction that's already going on to move those out there. As you've seen in the contractor in my memo, anything that brings over $1,000, we're not charged a 10% fee on it, and anything under that, we do have to pay a 10% fee, but that's taken out of the monies before the auctioneer writes his check. What I have passed out, though, is this pink sheet, and this is an amended list of the vehicles that are auctioning. There were two vehicles on the list that needed to come off, and we just didn't have time to get them off before the agenda was set, you know, as you all found out.
What's your plan if these don't sell? What's your plan if these don't sell? Can we just junk them or send them to the junkyard or whatever?
If y'all deem that true.
So, that's come back before us if they don't sell?
I think that we could probably go ahead and...
If, once you've declared them surplus and ordered them sold, unless some, I don't, I think the law gets so, I mean, there's, they're not...
You don't just take anything for them? There's not a minimum bid?
There's not a minimum bid, so I think somebody will give you a dollar for them.
The vehicles generally sell real well through the auction. Everybody likes to buy a city vehicle.
I wish you got two, three pallets of light fixtures. I never sold that one. Couldn't even give them away. When is the auction?
The auction is the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Black Saturday? Or, I'm sorry.
And it generally starts at 10:00 AM in the morning at the Expo Center.
They get the governor to drive a tank over them if they don't sell.
Any questions to the staff, okay?
I may approve the declaration of these items surplus.
Second. Have a motion by Vice Mayor here, and a second by Commissioner Vogel. Would you read the, would you read that entire list to us?
No, sir, I will not. But I'm sure the clerk would be happy to do that. This is a resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items and authorizing the sale of said items by public auction.
Okay, let's vote. Do we have another item number? Consider residence surplus certain Shawnee Police Department? Is that, that's a separate one? Item number eight?
Yes.
Is there somebody going to report on that, or is that just...
More of the same?
More of the same?
It really is.
It's just more of the same. I mean, we've read our packets, huh?
You're going to donate if you need...
Donating.
We don't need a staff report, I think, on this matter. Thank you. We have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hall?
Who made the motion?
Huh? Vice Mayor.
Do we have a, how many vehicles is it that we're giving to them?
Just two to OBU. I mean, two to OBU, and McLeod gets three.
Three. Okay. This is a pretty standard practice for us to give, to ask you guys to give to other local governments that need vehicles. Hand me down.
Okay, would you read that, please, ma'am?
This is a resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items, authorizing the donation to the city of McLeod Police Department.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider a resolution to surplus certain Shawnee Police Department vehicles and donate to the OBU Police Department. Sort of the same thing that we were talking about here, so...
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall, a second by Commissioner Dykstra.
And this is a resolution declaring certain items of personal property surplus and no longer needed for city purposes, describing said items, and authorizing the donation of said items to OBU.
Okay, let's vote.
Those police guards are not the one we got sitting out at one of the schools.
Motion carries.
I got a dummy I'll give you to put in.
Let's move on to item number 10.
I'll leave it, Charlie.
We don't take family members.
I'm losing control.
At this rate, we'll get home in time to watch NCIS.
Consideration of approval, item number 10, is a preliminary plat for Woodsong located northeast of Woodsong Garden, Shawnee, Oklahoma, case number S-1114, applicant Austin, 2008, revocable trust.
There should be a planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant in this case is requesting preliminary plat approval for roughly 24 acres. The subject site is located on Fourth This Street, about a half-mile east on East of Harrison. It was rezoned July 7th, 2014, so just this past summer. Currently, on the site, there are two additions, Woodsong and Woodsong Garden. Both were two-phase projects completed in 2008. So, this continuation, therefore, is called Woodsong Phase III. It is proposed as a two-phase project with 68 total lots, 42 of which will be in Phase I, and 26 will be in Phase II. If you can look at your Exhibit 1, the preliminary plat, we have...
What page are we on?
I'll tell you. I think it's on page 69.
Page three of the report, but, okay. So, on Exhibit 1 preliminary plat, we have two major interests and exits here on our plat, first of which would be on Churchill, and the second of which would be on Kelly Green along the east here. There is an access agreement for 50-foot, a 50-foot road easement for this connection on Kelly Green here, which is conditioned as part of, it's being built along with Phase I, so at that point, it needs to be built. That'll be condition, condition 3A of the stack recommendation. So, that'd be the major condition here. The offside road improvements would be done compared with Phase I infrastructure construction. It received unanimous approval from Planning Commission on the 5th of November, and staff does recommend approval based on the fact that it's consistent with zoning in the area and the comprehensive plan.
Any questions of staff? Any discussion here that you might have?
Will there be a way to get the street out to 45th there, you saying?
They have an easement. You know what you were talking about? They have an easement to come out to 45th?
No, the easement I was referring to is the one that goes east to Churchill.
Goes east. No, no, you're saying, it goes through that addition.
There's a piece of property there that cuts you off south. Yeah, that's what I thought. Be nice if it...
Any other questions of staff?
There's actually four recommendations by staff, but conditions?
Correct. There's four recommendations placed here, and we do recommend approval based on those conditions.
Any discussion, anything else? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Motion to approve based with the four conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Then I guess we need to vote.
He did.
Oh, he just did, sorry. I didn't see it.
Basically, city engineers first.
Motion carries. Item number 11, consideration of approval of a final plat for Deerfield Estates located in the 1400, 1500 block of East Bradley, Shawnee, Oklahoma, applicant Kishawaka Enterprises LLC. That's the one we were talking about. Item, yeah, do we have a staff report on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant in this case is looking for final plat approval. The preliminary plat was approved September 15th unanimously. It is located on the northwest corner of East Bradley and North Elm Street. It is 10 acres in size, and 19 lots are proposed. Lots four and five currently have houses already on the property, and during preliminary plat approval, we had a couple of conditions that we'd added, the first of which was the allowance for the terminus of the cul-de-sac on the north to be less than the 100 required feet towards the property line. It is currently 64 feet, and that was approved by the commission. We'd also require the limits of no access along Bradley Street here, and the inclusion of a four-foot sidewalk as well. The side is already zoned R1, and staff has recognized that the conditions of preliminary plat have been met, and does recommend approval as it is consistent with the zoning in the area and the comprehensive plan. And there are also, it's a recommendation of approval based on the four listed conditions as well.
So, item number three, what's addition of a limit of no access along Bradley Street?
Correct. That was just not written on the preliminary plat, so it was just added to make sure by final plat that they have that included there.
But they have an access, or they don't have an access?
No, it's a limits of no access for any of the lots that are but Bradley Street there, besides the main entrance that's provided.
Is that, so they got, if I understand it right, then they're going to be right up against Bradley there, but they won't be able to go out on Bradley Street?
Correct.
They go out to the east? Or to the west? How do they go out there?
It'd be to the south, so this would be on the north side of Bradley Street.
Yeah, but, okay, that one entrance is on Bradley.
Correct. It's the one entrance.
And that sidewalk's going to run all the way down to the corner?
The entire property line, correct.
And it's going to be ADA and all that?
Correct.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, I'm not hearing any, then. Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I recommend this be approved with the Deerfield Estates meeting the three conditions.
I'm sorry.
She said, she recommends it, as long as they meet the conditions, the three conditions that were outlined by the staff.
I just couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Right, no problem.
Second.
Okay, have a second. Did you get who that was? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, item number 12, we're going to get into some looks like house cleaning here. Things that we have contracts on and quite a few things, so I guess item number 12 is discussion, consideration, and possible action of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, divine benefit plan of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, to incorporate the definition of spouse, providing for the effective date, providing for repealer or severability, and declaring an emergency. So, if you read your packet, do you have any questions in this matter, or do I need to have someone come up and talk about? You have questions?
Can we have somebody come up and talk about it?
Sure. Jody, would you both like to come up here, please?
My mayor and commissioners, tonight, the ordinance before you is regarding the Windsor amendment to our OMRF plan. It's to amend the OMRF plan to update the definition of spouse, to be in line with the Internal Revenue Code ruling 2013-17, due to the 10th Circuit Appeals mandate to let the stay that was previously in place regarding same-sex marriage.
DOMA case.
Okay, right.
Just one quick question. We have three new commissioners. Jody, can you give us about a 30-second on OMRF?
30 seconds.
Or whatever. You know what I'm saying. I'm not sure they're...
The elevator pitch is...
You bet. Good evening. My name is Jody Cox, and I am the executive director of the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund. We are a nonprofit group. I think that's really important for the commissions to hear that, because you guys have founded us back in 1966. Two cities, city of Shawnee and the city of Ada, came together and said, there's got to be a way that we can do a retirement fund for the cities and towns across the state. So, you guys are our founding member. I'm very proud of that. And what we do is we pool all the assets in the state of Oklahoma, and we provide retirement services for over 200 cities and towns across the state, and I'm proud to say that this is my hometown, too. So, I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but we appreciate your business.
Well, sometimes we just use initials, you know, and I want everybody to be sure they knew what that retirement fund was.
Oh, it makes some major changes in our retirement about a year ago, a year and a half ago.
Yes, we made some significant changes, and we worked very hard on them, but we are glad that we got through all that.
It spread out the risk pool with other cities, smaller towns, and...
You bet. We have small towns and big towns. Our largest city is the city of Broken Arrow, but Shawnee, since you guys were our founding member, have significant assets with us as well.
Has there been any exceptions in any of the towns for them not passing this?
Has there been any exceptions in any of the towns for them not passing this?
This has been a very emotional issue and there's been a lot of angst across the state. But to date, we have 50% of them in. It is required by law that we have them in by the end of the year. Some of them are passing it under protest for their own personal convictions. But in all honesty, it really is something that the federal government is requiring. It is an IRS issue. It's not anything that I'm coming before you to say you have to pass, but it is an Internal Revenue Code issue.
Actually, the US Supreme Court's wanna make the decision.
You bet.
It's not a moral thing, this is all about...
It is the binding by the law and so we don't have to be penalized.
It is your fiduciary duty.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hall, I got two seconds.
Use that one.
Let's do it in two seconds.
Okay, let's vote. You might just stay here in case we have some questions.
I think there are more questions.
Motion carries. Okay, item number 13. Oh, wait, we better do an emergency clause on that? Yes, I'm sorry, Chair'll entertain, we have a motion by Vice Mayor for emergency.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall.
It has to be in between 30 days, less than 30 days.
When we do an emergency, that way it happens.
All right, I was making sure I understood what I was going on with.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, 30 days is emergency.
Motion carries, okay. Item number 13, discussion and consideration of possible action of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defined benefit plan for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma pertaining to the definition of employee, pertaining to eligibility, providing for employer pickup of mandatory contributions, providing for the determination of vesting for city manager, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring a emergency.
I think considering, Mayor, that this language has to do with the contract. I'd like to suggest that we resolve that in an executive session at a later date. I'm not that familiar with the terms of his agreement.
Well, now that contract with him was back there 19...
2009.
2009, okay. So he has, there is a contract on that that we have to abide by. We're just kinda cleaning up the work as I say.
Also, do we only have 30 days for this one, too? Is that why it said declaring an emergency?
First of year.
Yeah.
First of year, so...
Yeah, well, that's an emergency clause. What we're trying to do is clean up what should have been done since 2009.
Okay, I guess I'm not feeling real comfortable with that.
Okay, what, you can vote, no, or abstain?
Can we, can you explain, I guess...
How this is going to work and what this is about and how it's meaningful to the city manager's contract, especially in light of the, me recently learning that he's accepting another job.
Well, in his contract, I have in my memo the item in his contract about OMRF and it says, "The city shall contribute to the Oklahoma Municipal Retirement Fund, OMRF, on behalf of the manager solely for his benefit, a percentage of his salary equal to that of other department heads, in addition to the salary provided for in Section 3A. The retirement for the manager vests immediately upon his commencing employment with the city."
Okay, oh, so it's...
That statement is in his contract.
Okay, so he's 100% from day one?
That's what it says in his contract.
Okay.
And we just need to amend the plans so that the plans agree. Right, the plans don't agree with the contract.
Okay.
And there's no additional service being granted for service sake. It's just to immediately vest him in all three of the plans that he participates in. So again, it's not to grant him additional service, just to get him vested as the contract states. It's a contractual term that you're just doing some cleanup.
So how is that meaningful to the budget? Is that meaningful?
There's no budget, there's no budget impact at all.
All retirement is budgeted 100%. It's not tiered like, you know, you'd have to be here for seven, the rest of the employees have to be for seven years. And, but we budget, because we put that dollar amount away every year. It's not, we don't wait until someone's 100% vested and catch it up. Every year, what's in the budget goes into the retirement system and helps grow the plan.
I might as well adopt the change.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Let's see if Phillips has got a plan.
I do.
Okay, let's vote.
I guess it's too late now, but what happens if we don't vote?
Well, we're in violation of the contract, I don't know, Jody could tell us that.
I'd be settled in a court.
Because it was kinda...
Go to court, yeah.
Okay, I just was wondering, like, if we don't understand it clearly, you know? Because I, I'm not a benefits coordinator for, you know, 200 cities, I don't really understand it.
Well, and it's something that the city negotiated directly with the city manager, February 1st of 2009. So it's a contract between the city commissioners and the city manager.
Right.
And then we're turning around and trying to clean up the plan to mimic your contractual terms that the commission before you...
How about this commission sitting here now, when we hire a new city manager, if we hire, if we need to, then is it gonna be, do we have to go with what we just did now?
I would truly say no.
Contract supervenes over...
No, we negotiate that contract.
I would suggest you negotiate and get us involved at the beginning so therefore we can make sure that the contract agrees with what the plan terms are. So we definitely would like to hear from you as you negotiate, if you negotiate with another city manager.
And you can, so let's make it clear, you can change the plan if you change the contract. If you don't want 100% vesting in that beginning, then we just fix it again. So you're still free to negotiate, you're still free to negotiate however you want to negotiate. This is just to get you caught up to where you are.
Okay, well, we...
I would want to help negotiate that contract and I didn't realize it's in violation, so I'd like to get straight to that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe, on this matter, right? And we already voted and it passed, now we have an emergency clause, okay? In this matter also to clean this act up, Chair'll entertain a motion in that matter.
So move.
Vice Mayor here.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dijkstra, let's vote.
So the contract supervenes, or it's the law of the land, and we just fix it with the OMRF?
But we prefer to fix it right at the beginning.
Right, of course, of course, so we don't have to...
Okay, item number 14, hang in here, let's see. Discussion, consideration and possible action of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defined contribution plan for the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma pertaining to definition of employee, pertaining to the definition of compensation, pertaining to plan design, pertaining to allocation of forfeitures, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring an emergency.
So this is the same thing only on the defined contribution?
On another plan, okay.
And this will be for all employees?
Just the city manager.
Just Brian McDougall, I mean, not the city manager in general, just this particular...
For this city manager?
That's the amendment. That way, any future contracts with any future city managers aren't affected by this. You are free to negotiate your own contract.
I think maybe what we're struggling here is this is, these are contract plans that either everybody's in or all department heads are in. We all who are department heads have three, other people may have one or may have two. The city manager's in three, so the only amendments you are making go to vesting of the city manager and everything else stays exactly like it is.
There are three plans. The first one is the defined benefit plan. The second one that you're talking about right now is the defined contribution. And the third is the city manager and department head plan only. So it's three plan amendments to agree to that one contract.
And that's because we changed the plan.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
Okay, Chair'll entertain a motion in this matter.
It's an insult to injury.
So move.
Vice Mayor Hall.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote. I'm arguing.
Am I thinking if I voted?
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. Motion carries. Item number 15, discussion, consideration, possible, oh, do we need to do emergency on that one, too? I'm sorry, I almost missed that. Chair'll entertain a motion on emergency clause in this matter.
So move.
All right, so just so I'm totally clear, Cindy, it's, all this money is already accounted for, it's already...
Yes, every year I put it to, every year we put, every pay period, actually.
Right.
We do the percentage for retirement, so it is, there's no budget impact whatsoever.
So...
He just will immediately own it.
Yeah, well, he's been here five years, but, so it's kind of, he might have invested in other plans, but with the option of the zero to seven, seven or nothing, right? Yeah, for times three. Brian, are you leaving? Are you actually...
I'll be talking about that later.
Okay, you are gonna bring that up in your comments, okay? I've just...
But there's no budget impact.
Hopefully you won't, we won't have to pay it until later.
No budget impact, no. Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Item number 15, discussion, consideration and possible action of an ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defined contribution plan for the position of department head of our city manager of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, providing for the determination of vesting for city manager, providing for repealer and severability, and declaring emergency.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, second by Vice Mayor. Eric?
Can we do the emergency at the same time or...
No, had to do it separately. Motion carries. Now, Chair'll entertain a motion on emergency clause in this matter.
So move.
You can have it.
Okay, how about a second for me?
All right, I'll take a second.
Second by Commissioner Dijkstra. James, let's vote.
I can myself unload, I'm sorry.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jody. And you both. Okay, item number 15 is discussion, consideration and possible action to authorize staff to apply for a splash pad grant and designation of funds.
Mayor and Commissioners, what we're here for this evening is to ask for y'all's support on submitting a letter of intent to the Avidis Foundation and to proceed with filling out a grant for the splash pad at Boy Scout Park.
For, I'm sorry, for what?
Splash pad at Boy Scout Park.
I've included in your packet a budget for this project. It is right around $400,000. We would be filling out the grant, asking Avidis for $200,000, which would make the city responsible for the rest. We have filled out a grant and submitted to TSET, the Tobacco Settlement Trust Fund, for the $110,000 that's sitting there, if we qualify for that. The money, though, that the city would need to have to complete this money, would need to come from a loan from the general fund into the capital projects fund and then be repaid when we budget for the next season.
Did you say loan from?
From general fund to the capital project.
There may be some fundraising in that matter, okay? There's a lot of people talking about, I could raise money for the big pool of the community, there's a lot of...
I know, it said $90,000, right, was that what I read? $90,000 is what you need to do.
Well, that is if we get the $110,000 from the Tobacco Settlement Trust Fund.
If not, it's the whole two...
If not, it could be the whole $200,000. There is, we are hoping to have some funds left from the fundraising on the municipal pool to be able to put towards this project also. We are just not quite sure exactly how much that will be at the moment.
James, is there any way... Is there any way to know on the 110, if you have high odds of getting that or not?
I think we have pretty good odds. I'm not gonna stick my neck out there and say that we have it. But we will know somewhere around February at their board meeting whether we got that or not.
And if you get this, if we go forward with this, would this be available for the summertime?
That's what we are aiming for, to be available for this summer.
Have you looked at other granting organizations or looked for donations or matches or...
We do, we look for other grants. And we have filled out for other grants. We did fill out for the land and water conservation grant on this, which we were denied any funds from them.
What about the parks, what is it, Keep Shawnee Beautiful, Parks Visit Shawnee, what was it?
There's, let me just kinda tell you, there are several people in the community that are working behind this like they did the pool.
Right.
So there will be, I can't tell you the amount, we don't know yet, but there are people saying, "We're gonna go out and raise funds because it's such a vital thing for our community in that area."
But that would just offset, well, I mean, if we, we need to do this in order to have it ready for the season, summer season, we need to kinda go forward with this.
Correct, correct.
You know, and we've been talking about this for a year, or more, yeah. You know, I make a motion to approve, but...
A motion to approve?
I'd like to, but if we do this, if we, just straight up, I don't know if I could do it because it's, I would say it's contingent on the 110, though, because we're already kind of like involved in putting the big old pool in, which will be, it'll, it'll serve the community well. But if you, if you wait till we get the grant, once, and then once that, I mean...
But then it won't be ready this summer.
Right, that's why we need to go ahead and secure the funds now in order to go ahead and get started on this. Contingent upon approval from Avidis on a grant.
But can we clarify, what you're asking for is authorization to make application for the Avidis grant?
Correct.
Commitment of $200,000, start construction, okay.
We're not asking for the $200,000 now.
You're not gonna go out there and start shoveling tomorrow?
No.
So could you read the language of that?
The, all that's on here is request permission to apply for it, submit a letter of intent to the foundation. The, it's just some grants we can't go for until the commission says go for it and this is, is fine. So it's, the action requested is just authorize the staff to apply.
To apply, there's no commitment then?
No, there's no commitment.
To the other $110,000, okay.
As long as we're not paying the 200 today, like, you know, taking a loan from general fund.
No, that's not what we're doing, we're just to authorize them to apply for the grant.
What was that talk about?
At the same time, Commissioner, we wanted you to know what Brian thought his odds were and what we thought the budget would be and where we, where we would potentially come up with the money if those grant funding sources don't come through, to give you a better picture of the whole situation.
So if Avidis gives us $200,000, we still have to come up with another $200,000.
We're on the hook for $200,000.
Now we have to figure out a reasonable way, because we won't know probably timely on the tobacco settlement, whatever they call that.
When's the TSET thing coming, or when's it?
More than likely February.
February, okay.
This returns like any other project for you to approve, go out for bids, open bids, any other...
Anything I do on this project will come before y'all.
Okay, did we have a motion and a second?
We do, we do.
Do we have a motion and a second? Okay, let's vote.
Our mayor said he'd make up the difference if we couldn't get it.
Motion carries. Item number 17 is acknowledge the sales tax report received on 20th of November.
Can you put on your planning commission, planning session agenda about the, about the low-income housing projects?
Sure.
We need to make a position about that.
I'll be honest, when I saw November sales tax, my heart kind of dropped. But immediately after I got the numbers, I called Oklahoma Tax Commission and compared to last year, we were down $125,000. But Dave looked back and last year we had got a one-time $100,000 from one company that, from the gas line and stuff like that. Or, I don't know, they don't tell you exactly who it's from, because I can't, it's not public knowledge. So technically, we're really only down $25,000, but compared to 2012, we're up $120,000. So we're still trailing a little behind from last year. We received $1,374,000 and last year at this time was, you know, about 100, $1.5 million. So hopefully, you know, we see all this development that's going on right now, but people have to remember it takes a couple of months.
There's a lag, yeah, there's a lag.
So there's hope, I'm hoping that in the next few months, it will increase.
Do you think maybe the construction on Kickapoo, it's maybe kind of throttling those companies over there?
Well, those definitely is.
We'll see the sales tax.
Definitely is. But the all-state projects are tax exempt, so, aren't they?
Yes, but the businesses that are over there.
The slacks of the world.
Yeah, like the record shop over there.
Yeah, it's very good.
Right, I'm sorry.
And I can't... And I can't tell you exactly what section is down yet, with reports to come out about ten days after.
Okay. Any other questions, Doc? If not, then we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several things to report. I was out last month, so I've got a little bit more than usual, probably, but I'll try to make it brief. We're trying to get, we're trying to get, I believe, a retreat set up for Friday the fifth and sixth of December. Unbeknownst to us, that's better, so...
Sixth is, yeah.
Is it the sixth and the seventh?
It's on Saturday morning, that's the seventh or sixth, sixth is...
History, history sort of tells us that we've...
My sooner buddy here says to me, "The cowboy, who cares?"
Yeah, that's right.
This year don't matter.
We also had some other dates. I think the only thing I wanted to stress was, this is, this is the perfect opportunity, like Commissioner Hare just said a minute ago, for commissioners to come together and, and bring their ideas to the table and we vet those. And that becomes our marching orders for the year. In fact, if I had my way, we'd probably do it twice a year, so that we can see where we've been, whether we've accomplished those things and where we're going. So, please, please commit to that and understand that we'll have a facilitator that'll be there, we'll probably do it at the expo and bring your ideas, and I'll be contacting you before that period of time to sit down with you and talk to you about your ideas, so I can begin to bring them together.
Now, is that when you're going to get a date? Are you still saying the fifth and the sixteenth?
I'm not exactly sure where Carrie is, in the process of what all y'all's calendars look like, but we're begin, we're beginning to...
The only one I've heard from Carrie on was the eleventh, has anybody else heard a different? It's not, it's not finalized yet, is what you're trying to say, the date's not finalized.
But, but we're, we're zoning out on a couple of different dates, please look at those and, and make yourselves available.
Will it be an all-day thing, Brian?
It'll be an all-day thing on Friday, for sure.
You're thinking about it, an all-day Friday and maybe Friday?
All-day Friday, Saturday.
It's a real good work session, Friday and Saturday.
Number two, we've met on several occasions with the OBU students, and they are currently making those telephone calls. I sent a message out to you guys, letting you know that they're doing it. It's been pretty successful. We've made about twenty-two hundred calls, probably five hundred of them have been good. The data's a little bit mixed, we'd hope to get about twice that many, and so the students have another week left or so to work on it. They developed, they developed the webpage and the questions, and, and the only thing that we had an additional cost in was just to pay these, these students about eight dollars an hour to come in and do it. It's been two to four of them, and they've been doing it for about two weeks, and we got about one more to go. I think the cost will be less than eight hundred dollars, eight hundred to a thousand max, but I think, I think one of the things that it has revealed is that, that our, our citizens didn't necessarily know that sales tax was something that we relied on so heavily, more particularly, but more information to come on that, we'll publish it for everybody. Part of the reason why you see a lot of this surplus stuff, and, and part of the reason why this, this changed at the last minute was because of me, but we put, we started looking at vehicles, we, we've kind of grown our fleet a little bit, probably a little bit more than I felt like we needed to, so I worked with the departments and with James Bryce, and we, we kind of, you'll, you'll notice that on most of these, these lists here, they're, the vehicles that we surplused are in the nineties, you know, they're approaching an age where their end of life is, is just, just about out, and, and so what you'll be seeing... Yeah, yeah, not me, or you, but vehicles.
I get it.
Let's see. Also, you'll be seeing, we'll be bringing a budget amendment to you at our next meeting to talk about our aquatics director position. At this point, that position will report to James Bryce, and we will bring you a budget amendment that shows where we feel that money's going to come from, we'll be bringing you a job description, and then we need to go ahead and get busy advertising. We figure probably thirty, sixty days, we can get our resumes and, and start meeting some of these folks that are, that are specialists in this, because we want them to be up and running and have programs up and running by the time the pool opens in May, so been some fairly good effort put toward that. Oh, something else I wanted to show you, at, at your desks, you should have a copy of this. You'll remember that after the storms in May of twenty thirteen, that the Workforce Oklahoma got a million-dollar grant for us to be able to take advantage of putting some folks to work to help us out, get things picked up. Several of the staff members went and received this award in Oklahoma City, I believe, what day was it, Thursday? Really proud of this. We took advantage of that and cleaned up a lot of our streams and a lot of the lake, and wanted to let you guys know that our staff have been recognized, and our city have been recognized as, as business leader of the year from the East Central Workforce Oklahoma by the governor.
Great, congratulations.
We were able to get some employees from that.
We had about ten employees for, also, pretty much until the money ran out. Our guys really took advantage of, of putting those guys to work, and they were all their own equipment, and, and all those employees relied by, by the state instead of us. One of the things, one of the other things that we're talking about doing is, you may know that, that former lieutenant, his name is completely...
Pringle?
Pringle, yes. I went to work as the police chief in McCloud, and so some of these vehicles, which isn't, just because he went doesn't mean we gave the vehicles to them, we've done that in the past, but one of the other things that we're doing is talking about having us take over their fleet maintenance for the city. So, we may be bringing a budget amendment for revenues coming in and expenses going out, because we may need another employee, but we're in the process of looking at that, and wanted to let you know about that, because they're interested. And then finally, the white elephant in the room, this morning I got a telephone call from the city of Port Arthur, Texas. I'm now their final candidate. That doesn't mean that I'm, that I'm their candidate yet, what that means is, is, like we talked about, construct, contract negotiations, that's the next part. And I've told you guys, I've cut you guys up to break, up to speed about what's going on. I estimate that if, if we can come to an agreement, probably somewhere in December first, but it's, there's still a long way to go there, because as those of you that were here when we negotiated the contract six years ago, there's give and take on both sides, and we actually renegotiated some of the things in, in my contract in two thousand thirteen. Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Agee were on those, so hang in there, I'll keep you posted. If you have any questions, please call. I'm still your manager until the day I, I step off the, off the property, and I have, I have, whether, whether I stay or I don't, it's bittersweet. Worked with three hundred employees for the last six years, and a lot of, I've worked with in that. Thank you.
Well, we had a lot of good times.
Yep.
So, could you educate me, I guess, because this came from the news staff writer, Sherry Kuncy. It indicated that the next step that they were going to do is that they had made an offer to you, and that they're negotiating the letter of agreement with benefits for you, and that they're excited about working with you. So, you're saying you haven't received any benefits, any...
No, he said, that's exactly what he said, he's got to negotiate the contract.
No, I mean, have you accepted?
I have not accepted yet.
Okay.
I have, I have been, I'm their final candidate. It's looking good. I wouldn't be going any further if it weren't, but I have not accepted yet.
Anything else in your report?
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any new business?
No new business.
Okay, then I will recess our commission meeting and will move to the Shawnee Airport. Shawnee Airport Authority, I will call it to order. I will declare we have a quorum. Consider approve, item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, let's vote. Motion carries, any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
No new business, then I will adjourn to Shawnee Airport Authority, and I will call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I will declare that we have a quorum, and item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daxter, let's vote. Carrie? Motion carries, any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will adjourn to Shawnee Municipal Airport Authority, and I will convene the Board of City Commissioners, and I'll adjourn here.
Hey. Sound like me, I think.